Everybody ready over there? You ready?
Ready.
Okay.
We are ready.
You're all ready. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order for Thursday, October twenty-third. We have three faces before us. We are gonna have a nine o'clock curfew. We'll try and get through as much as we possibly can. Now, we have to go through our minutes from our last meeting and a roll call first.
All right. Member Alfonso? Member Bransky?
Here.
Member Cap? Member O'Brien?
Here.
Member Johnson?
Here.
Member Castaneda? Chair Surzaga?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Anybody have any changes for the minutes? No? All right, can I have a motion to accept them as presented?
Still moving.
Member O'Brien, second?
Second.
Second, I'm number Bransky. Roll call.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda? Chair Surzaga?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
First off, does anybody have any comments they would like to make pertaining to something other than that's on the agenda tonight? No? Okay. The way we conduct our meetings is the petitioners are gonna be called up to the podium. We're gonna have you state your name and address for the record, and we're gonna swear you in because all testimony is taken under oath. Anybody in the audience has a question they would like to ask, please raise your hand, and we're gonna do the same with you. Have you state your name and address, and you also will be sworn in. First case is case number twenty-five thirty-four zoning map amendment from B one to B two zoning district at one eighty-one oh six to one eighty-one twenty-four Martin Avenue. This was published in the September twenty-fourth edition of the South Town. Did we get any comments pertaining to this?
We did not.
Okay.
Right, not prior to the meeting.
Okay, petitioner's name is Grace Pointe. You wanna come up to the podium? State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for everybody here.
We have your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Grace. My address is one eight one oh six to one eight one two four Martin Avenue, the building. I'm the owner of the building.
Okay, and you wanna raise your right hand?
Yeah.
And swear the testimony you're gonna give?
Yeah.
It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I mean, truth or whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Nothing but the truth, okay. Okay, now, in order to get this is for anybody that's got a case before us. There's five people here tonight. You need four positive votes in order to get your item passed. So if you wanna take a chance, we'll hear your case tonight. If you're not comfortable with just five of us here, we can postpone it to our next meeting. So, would you like to continue with your case tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So you're the owner of the building at one eighty-one oh six Martin Avenue, right?
Yes.
And you wanna rezone it from B one to B two?
Yes, sir.
You wanna tell us why you'd like to do that?
Yes.
Go ahead.
My name is Grace, and I'm a proud small business owner here in Homewood. From the first day I came to this town, I was drawn to its charm, the tree-lined street, and the friendly faces. And the strong sense of the community that makes Homewood truly feel like its home. Over the year, I have grown to love this city deeply, and it's my dream to contribute to its continued growth and vitality in a meaningful way. I have seen Homewood evolve with more families moving in, more young professionals calling its home. With this growth, I see an incredible opportunity to make downtown Homewood a one-stop, walkable destination, a place where people can shop and dine, all within just a few blocks. Downtown Homewood is already such a special area. Its location right by the train station makes it a convenient and inviting destination for people from nearby communities to visit and experience what makes our town unique. Tonight, I'm here to respectfully request a zoning change to allow the salon space and build retail at one eighty-one oh six to one eighty-one two four Martin Avenue. Our vision is to transform the unused property into a vibrant, welcoming space that complements nearby shops and restaurants. This will encourage foot traffic and add to the beautiful rhythm of downtown life. Here are a few key reasons for this request. One, small commercial space on Martin Avenue. As everybody know, that was B two before. The property at one eighty-one oh six to one eighty-one two four Martin Avenue were originally built with smaller commercial units. Current tenants still have leases for another two years, maybe more, so when I bought the building. But the remaining space are too limited for many retail users such as grocery stores or boutiques. So it's not able to do it. Later you can show a video. It's only like a six hundred square foot, nine hundred square foot like that, okay? To prevent long-term vacancies and maintain an active downtown environment, a zoning adjustment would allow the more flexible use of these smaller spaces. Second, improve the function and parking access. Ridge Road should continue focus on retail business, you know, because Ridge Road, there have not too many parking spots. While Martin Avenue is better suited for service type of business such as salon spas, the Martin Avenue location offers larger parking lot. So my building, I have fifty parking lot. Make it easier for customers to park, stay longer, and conveniently access multiple services in one location. This setup also helps reduce street congestion on Ridge Avenue and create more balanced and functional downtown layout. So they can park my parking lot longer, and after they done some service, they can go to, you know, point a stone to eat, going to whatever they should eat because there are already no parking, so they can stay there longer. This can be, you know, our traffic may be better for our town, that's I think, sorry. Diversifying zoning between Ridge Road and Martin Avenue will promote mixed-use downtown, attract more visitors, and support both small service business and businesses and established retailers. The salon space model will create independent spaces for beauty professionals and more, many of whom are from nearby communities such as Tinney Park, South Harlem, and Madison. So I have people come another town to here. So by bringing them here, we are not only support the local businesses, but also draw them claim to the Homewood, help boost nearby shops, restaurants, and businesses. This study for flow of dating activity increases both economy and tax revenue for the village. Yeah, so they bring their customer to here, that's, yeah. This project is about empowerment, giving professionals a place to grow while adding new energy and life to downtown Homewood. Homewood has so much heart and potential. I truly believe this project can be a meaningful part of bright future. My goal is to help our downtown continue to grow, a place where people love to visit and gather. So you see, we bring the young people. It's professional, and the young people come here. You know, young people like to spend money. They come to here, then after they service down, you know, they can eat, you know, shopping together, okay? Thank you so much for your time and for your continued support of local business owner like me and them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now you just recently purchased this building, correct?
Yes, I just purchased.
So you're responsible for what's going on in that building?
I, yes, I should.
Okay, and why do you wanna rezone it from its current zoning?
Okay, so for I believe that was B two, there's something already set up there. So for they set up there already, and they have lease, then I can stop, say, okay, service not, you can come stay here. So then, after they stay like a different part, they only left a little space for I have to rent it out, right? So that's not enough for me to rent to retail boutique or grocery store. I think downtown we need a grocery store, but all the building anywhere, we can open that because of the space limited. In that case, you know, I tried to rent to whatever retails, but like right now, it's more than half year, I couldn't. It's too hard to rent it. So everybody, you don't like to see the weekends because that's downtown Homewood. We want here more activity, more young people, you know, that's bring Homewood more activity, I think.
Okay. So you want to put commercial on the first floor, correct?
Yes.
Second and third floor would remain residential?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Member Castaneda, would you like to start with any questions?
Sure. So thank you, first of all, for taking the time to write out that statement and speak to it. I really appreciate that. So I have thoughts, I'm sure, that overlap with a lot of my fellow commissioners, and I know that we wanna have a good conversation here. So I'll just start off with a couple of opening thoughts that I have, which, overarching when I was reading all of this, I was thinking just because it's true that the building has businesses in it right now that are more typical of the B two designation, but that doesn't necessarily mean it would always have to be that way. You know, all the businesses right now that are in there are grandfathered in, as it were, and ultimately, they're there existing right now because they are allowed. But if they were to close and move to another place, then that would no longer be allowable. We know this. And so, you know, I just wanted to, just because this is the quiet end of the B one downtown core right now doesn't necessarily mean that it would always have to be. You know, we created this new zoning class. We called it downtown core. I was downtown for several hours a few weeks ago for the Fall Fest, and it, that particular corner was really hopping, or vendors everywhere. It was really vibrant and active. And I, I thought it really lived up to the name of downtown core. And I think about suburban downtowns, it's not just one main drag, right? It's several square blocks and, you know. It's several square blocks, and there's all different types of uses. And so I just wanted to discuss a little bit more what it might mean if we considered downzoning this parcel, what it mean, what the implications may be for surrounding parcels and how those chips may fall after that. That's it.
Okay.
I have more, but we'll, we'll lay off each other.
And always come back to you.
Yeah.
Did you wanna respond to that, or?
Actually, that's all your decision, you know, in my mind, I think your downtown should be getting more type of businesses. Then, the most important to bring more people going to the downtown. It's not only shop. Maybe they love that stuff like me. They're gonna move here. You know, there's gonna be more business, more revenue, more activity. It's good for Homewood.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you.
Member Johnson?
Yeah, I appreciate the comments that member Castaneda made. And also appreciate the staff, the presentation, the information, the layout, the information about the request and your presentation. I appreciate all of that. It's a good job. I guess, sort of following up on what's being said, what we essentially have is a B two structure existing in B one. And that's, if you were to pick that entire structure up and move it down the street, it would fit perfectly in the B two district. And the other thing, I guess, that should be considered here is, how many, and I guess it's a question really is, you said that there were two years left on some of the leases. Was that all the leases or just?
All the leases is more than two years.
Okay.
Some people have two years, some people maybe five years. Robert, you have five years lease, right?
No, I believe my lease is of March of twenty-twenty-six. I have two-year.
Two years, yeah. Yeah, so they have a more option on a lease. So they want to stay, they have to stay.
Right. So, just so we're clear, we have, is it a two-year lease or is there, are there two years left on leases?
There's two years left on the leases, but they have another option to continue on the lease.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So, in response to member Castaneda's comments and the desires of the village to enhance the B one district and for retail and other space, you wouldn't be realizing that for perhaps two years anyway. That is, the zoning is in, in place. It is the B one district, then certainly, the salons would not be allowed in B one at some point in the future. But right now, they're grandfathered in, and that is where we are for the next two years and perhaps beyond. As far as, I won't speak to the options because I don't know whether those options would apply. Do you know, Angela, Noah, the options, if I have an option to extend my lease beyond two years, that's a contractual obligation. So you, so, right, so, so that could, that would make at least one or more of those businesses eligible to stay within, even though it might violate the B one district, they would still be able to stay in that area. Right, exactly. Right, as long, exactly. So, any changes that would have to be made or that we would be considering for usage on the first, let's say, the first floor, because that's what we're talking about, would have to, we're talking down the road at least two years. And so I think that other than that, I think everything else fits within B two, even though the land, the property sits B one. And it works, and it looks like it's gonna continue to work in that way into the future, the short future, few years, so. So any planning that the village would have for making changes for B one structure would be delayed anyway. Is that correct? Okay. One other thing, you talked about using the space for retail, and I think you mentioned grocery stores and that sort of thing, that maybe you can expand on that a little bit, that the space is not compatible for that kind of retail.
Yes, so retail like a boutique or grocery store. So before, I bought the building, and actually, I have somebody wanted to rent that, like a two-dollar shop, like a retail or grocery stores, because I think we need some downtown here, the people can easily buy that food, everything. I had to try to rent it to somebody. Everybody come here said, too small. So it's not able to do that. Yeah, if they are bigger, you know, like a two thousand square foot, they may be consider to do it. But too small, they can't get everything they want in there, and maybe they don't make money, but by then, they all denied it. Don't want to come here, just because of the limited space.
And that's over, what, a six-month period or one year?
Six months. So I bought the building earlier this year, so right now, more than half year already. So the only thing I have two, like salon, you know, but at least you sell a product, but they want a service in there. Only two, they commit to here, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Member O'Brien?
Good evening. I don't know where to start. This is a very interesting case. In two thousand, that was the last time that we did a zone code upgrade. And we did it again twenty years later, twenty-twenty-two, to be effective January tenth of twenty-twenty-three. At that time, two years it took to go through that. There was the staff, there was the commission, and there was a consultant. And it took two years to go through. Items were removed and items were added. There was a lot of thought. At the end, there was a push to get it done. I don't know why there was a push or an expected deadline, but we got it done. And here we are, two and a half years later, and we're being asked to make a zoning change on a principal building in downtown Homewood. That being said, did the consultant make an error, the commissioners make an error, or the staff make an error in the forward plan that is just two and a half years old in developing the downtown area? And in general, the area, because they were all considered as part of the zone code. Personally, I don't see a need to make a change at this point. There are two buildings similar to this to the west of the parking lot. One is at one eighty-sixty-five, the other one's at one eighty-one twenty-three. Both are on Harwood. Both have commercial on the first floor and residential above. The zone code request that we received tonight does not include those buildings. It only includes this. Am I to assume that this is a variation of spot zoning, which I'm not favorable to? So I don't understand why, if there is a need to change this particular building, this building is not a building in distress. There is a vacancy because of a death. Those things happen. That's real life. There are some other changes that are going on in the building. It has had service organizations for years. It is a stepping stone, a short walk from Ridge Road. It's part of every public event that is held on Martin, because we're at that corner, which was mentioned by member Castaneda. Let me pause for a minute and ask staff a question. Shortly, a while ago, a year, year and a half, there is a change in in a requirement of salons, correct me if I'm wrong? Salons and spas and so forth, that there was a notice that they had to have to the fire department. To the fire department, a warning. Not for existing, but for incoming tenants, salons particularly. That the village board passed. You're familiar with that?
I'm not familiar with that, I think that.
Okay, I don't wanna dwell on it then. Let's go on. You are a commercial landlord, and you mentioned to me when I was at the building that you have other enterprises that will, that exist and that will be coming on board in the near term, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. As a commercial landlord, do you review check, particularly as a new landlord? Because you purchased the building this year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Have you checked the licenses of all of your tenants?
The existing, I didn't. The new one, I check.
The new ones what?
The new coming in, I can check, but the existing, I didn't check. Because whatever I check or not, they already existed. I can't do nothing with the unlisted, you know, on the list.
Okay, let me ask you the obvious question then. Are you aware that the businesses that are the other two items on the agenda tonight?
Yeah.
That you made reference to?
Yeah.
Are currently operating?
I think so, right? The two businesses, yeah, are operating.
Do I say anything? Say my name first?
Do you wanna stand up and give us your name, please?
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair, point of order. I wanna make sure we're talking only about the map amendment now, right? We're not talking about
Right, we're just talking about rezoning the building right now.
Right, so we have to stick to that subject. No, and I understand. I'm just, and maybe, yeah.
As long as it pertains to the rezone.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we're staying with the, yeah, staying with Okay, yeah, no, that, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we're staying with the, yeah, staying with the map of it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Let me try and clarify this. A zoning re, a rezoning request is normally. It's not a normal activity or hearing. Uh, it doesn't come up that often. There's a particular reason why there would be a rezoning, particularly after a new rezoning. Uh, in the materials that we received for tonight, there was a statement that I called staff on. And the statement is, this is a fairly complex case. Do you have any questions or wish to discuss agenda business, blah, blah, blah? It's a fairly complex case, that's what rezoning is. There's a lot of issues that have to be discussed. And I mentioned two other buildings, just as two other items that, you know, are part of the discussion. The reason I'm asking you with regards to. The salons and the fact that they're in operation. It speaks to the, um. What can I phrase it? Let me put it this way. It speaks to your overall plan for the building. And on page twelve of our materials. For your case. Under B two. Which is what you're requesting. Uh, there are many more special uses that are listed. Actually, there are eleven additional uses that are listed.
Well, I used the too much, I'm sorry.
Six of those uses, six of those uses. Are, um. Calculated to have a requirement of more parking. The parking lot currently is in his deficit position. It requires fifty-four, I mean, uh. It requires fifty-four and there are only forty-eight spaces in the parking lot, so it's a deficit of six. If in the rezoning, there would be a consideration. Under B two, under the special uses that are listed on page twelve. There would be more of a demand for parking. Granted, there's always a discussion on parking with regards to on-street parking, and there is a parking lot close by. But there's only so much on-street parking. And when you're talking about some of these uses. The uses are not readily turned over. They would be there for hours. Uh, they could be there for hours. Someone going to a salon, for example, could have a couple of services and be there for two, three, four, five hours. A coloring, a coat, or this, or that, a pedicure, whatever.
Okay, member Brian, let me interrupt you for a minute. What you're referring to are special uses.
Correct.
They would have to come before us to get permission to operate anyway.
I understand that.
So we would have the option at that point of either agreeing or disagreeing.
Well, I understand that totally, the point that I'm making is. If the request for the change of zoning is predicated upon this type of thinking, this planning. This planning does not accommodate the parking that's available. Therefore, these special uses, more than half of them, would not be available because there's no parking.
Right.
Um, so, um, our building, the residential, it's all professional, they, they work at the data. They're only cool at after work. So that can be a balance, uh, the parking there. Because the people come to get service, they're gonna daytime go there, they will never nighttime to go get service. So daytime will actually, it, I don't have too many car in there for my residential. The most of a car is, um, uh, in commercial use. So it's still not a full, uh, in, in the parking lot.
I understand that. I don't want to take up any more time, I'll, uh, come back.
Okay.
Later. Thank you.
Member Bransky.
I think somebody, Mr. Chair, you had a.
Yeah, exactly, that. Let me first say thank you for your opening statement, it was very well reasoned and you communicated it very well. Um, but yes, to member O'Brien's question. Uh, to which we had some raised hands on, I think started out with the, um. Fact that we've got new businesses operating in there. Um, apparently without meeting the requirements and requiring a special use, I think that was kind of the point of the question. Um, and I think we were also going to get some responses on that, so I guess if you want to. Take the time.
Well, right now, we're just talking about rezoning the building.
I know.
Yeah, I know, we're, we're jumping.
Yes, sir, did you state your name and address?
Yes, sir, uh, my name is Cyrus Su, I'm Chris's son, I'm also the manager of the building. Um, I just like briefly answer the gentleman's question for, uh, regarding the parking and, uh, the building itself. So the parking, uh, uh, parking, the parking issue with this building, if any building in this downtown area accommodate. Uh, empty parking spots, it would be this particular building. And in terms of this, when we purchased of the building. It was distressed before, the, the building was, the, the entire roof needs repair. And a lot of tenants was almost two months, and we have a lot of vacant units. We had to do a lot of work to, to repair the building. And afterward, we repaired the building, a lot of new tenants that came in looking for, um. Uh, to, looking for space to rent are. Are like B two tenants, a lot of them are salon, uh, some are grocery store. Um, that's what we get, that's why we're working on the, uh, rezoning. And I, I, I think that with the fifty parking spots that the building have. We can accommodate any building in the, in the Ridge Road. That can accommodate those businesses, it will be this building, because right now Ridge Road has salon. And the, 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 the client has to park actually on Ridge Road. And Martin Avenue, on, on the public parking, parking spots and doing the salon services currently.
Okay, let me ask you this, how many? As of right now, how many vacant spots do you have that you have to rent in that building?
Three.
Three?
Yeah.
That's it, okay.
Which three?
Oh, three, three commercial spots vacant right now, well, it's not. So I got some, um, girls about ready, you know, they are, they, they, they try to get a lessons, that's why we come. That's what I know is, I, I'm not allowed for service, that's why the, we started, so.
So you've got two requests tonight?
Yes, and I.
To go into that building?
Yeah.
So if those are approved, you'd have three, and you would still have to rent?
So I have two, uh, the request and one more vacancy.
Okay.
Yeah, three, totally three right now.
Which one is vacant to, to, it would be the third one?
Yeah, and, and the one I come out, I see you, that one, the one eighty-one, there was a office for a. No, 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 it's a, it's a, uh, one eighty-one oh six, there was a, um, insurance company. Uh, the office there, actually office should not be there, I, if, if really it's B one. So anyways, eh, eh, he was there and he moved out, that's why it's vacant right now.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you, so you never had a chance to answer your question? We're, we're interrupting you again, need to swear you in. Name an address, right?
Name an address. All right, you swear the testimony you're going to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the true self you got. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, you guys have primarily permitted uses when it comes to certain buildings, businesses that go into that building. I look at those, those businesses and those businesses don't, can't fit the structure of that building. As a realtor, uh, I actually own the real estate brokerage, um, the residential, commercial, and been doing this for fifteen years. Uh, and I'm also on the mortgage, college, social, and real estate, I'm just speaking of my expertise. This building particularly, and those juices, it doesn't fit. Even when we, uh, marketed that building, the only people who was getting is these type of, these type of, um. Clients, like these type of individuals. So even if we, if we don't rezonate, if we not allow rezoning, uh, which we have to respect. Uh, if those places going to be, even when the leases come due and those businesses are relieved. It's going to be extremely difficult to lease that building back up because of, now, I, I wish I could document. That I was even to, and was looking at all permitted uses, it is not going to fit. There's, even if we were to vacate everybody in a, in a, in a commercial spaces, and try to consolidate, right, to make it even bigger, right? Way to build a structure and the way, uh, and, and I know, uh, some of you probably been into the building. It won't even allow us to do it because we have to train the whole structure of the deal. Uh, so, uh, even if it's surely, I believe, these places are going to be six hundred square feet.
Five hundred, yeah.
Feet, so with, even with this place, it's okay, who are we going to be, who are we going to put into this unit? And those who we want to put in this unit, it won't be permitted, eh, eh, anyway, so. If it, if we don't get the zoning, and it got out, and I was telling her this. That more likely a lot of the bases will end up vacant, and we want to have a residential and a lot of vacancies at the bottom. Because there's, there is no real other uses for it, for as far as permitted from, from homeowners, you guys. And also from the tenants who want, want to come in, who want, want to come, they all will be serviced, it's, that's all I would say.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else, number Bransky?
I really didn't get to anything yet, but. Um, so I'm going to give everybody else a, a chance, so, um. Both good points from the audience, um. True, that building with that parking lot is a rarity, uh, in Homewood. And certainly the unit size is a handicap. For the future use of the building, depending on which way this zoning method goes. Um, so all, all very good points to consider. Uh, I have a question for staff, first of all. One, I think, think about this was to which, which side of the line in the case this, in the cases this question really belongs to. No, I'm going to say, I'm going to save that question if we get to one of the other cases here. So some, to that point, some of the special uses. That are listed in the B two, which I think we have page twelve up on the, on the screen. Are uses that. You just don't have the floor space for, unless you would have been a re-engineer in the building, the structure. Most of that top half of that list just, just isn't going to. Going to be in there, it is mostly the bottom half of the list. Um, that would be able to fit. Um, but most of these are looking at greater than twenty-five hundred square feet, so again. If you go to B two, what, what out of this, I guess, staff, what out of this special use list? Um, without modifying the building right now. Would, um, be able to be used in there in the B two?
The, uh, probably the salon and spa establishments, the childcare center. Uh, the co-working space.
Oh, yeah, well, now, what, I guess, for, for benefit of the audience, can I ask what, um?
Yeah.
If, when we say like, um, could the co-working space, this is greater than twenty-five hundred square feet? What that's saying is, if, if they want to use a space greater than twenty-five hundred, that requires a special use. But if they're using a space less than twenty-five hundred, it do not require a special use and it becomes a limited or a permitted.
Right. So, yeah, the, it would, basically the salon and spa establishments, uh, aren't permitted in B one at all. Neither childcare centers, uh, commercials, places of assembly, which are like event spaces and, um. That type of instructional space, those would be permitted here. I think that includes fitness too. But those are special uses that. Um, would be able to be considered, they don't have, they don't have square foot or something that's on them.
So I think, kind of what it points to, based on everything we've heard so far and your explanation. Is that. To get the most functionality out of this building. Uh, looking at that special use list especially, because nothing on the top half of this list. The permitted uses, I mean, medical office, professional office, yes. Um, there's some of that in there now. Personal service, less than twenty-five hundred square feet, limited use, yes. Um, but then the special uses, half this list wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't work in there. Um, but then when you go and you look at the B one. It's, it's even stricter. Um, so to make the building functional and marketable. And, um, with the added benefit of the parking lot. Uh, it sounds like regardless of what. The owner wants to put in there, having the ability to put something in there is kind of dependent upon changing. Uh, the zoning to B two, is the way I kind of see it. Once you get past that point, outside of this case. Then you move on to other cases where you start looking at what's trying to get in there, and those are. Taken on an individual basis that don't have anything to do with this case, unless this case was not going to rezonate, so. Just trying to clarify what we're looking at, it's very easy when you have multiple cases. Before us to start mixing the agendas and the purposes of what we're doing up here. So, uh, I just wanted to try to make the point to clarify what it is we're really looking at. It's about getting the use out of the building regardless of what's going in there. You're getting, making it so that the building has the most opportunity to be used. In a manner that's consistent with what we want to see in, in the downtown area. So with that said, I don't have any other questions.
Very well said, thank you. One other question for you. The first floor, do you plan to ever put residential on the first floor?
No.
Keep it all commercial?
Yeah, keep it all commercial.
Anybody else before I open it up to the audience?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Uh, clarification of staff. Uh, halfway down the special uses of the B two, there is a listing, a line item, co-working space greater than twenty-five hundred square feet. I don't think that exists in the code. I don't think it exists.
Yes, ma'am.
One more thought, so. We, we shouldn't just be considering the immediate issue of this building, I think we also need to consider the implications of. If we downzone this section of land, I think that it's reasonable to expect that. If we downzone this, then the building owner across the street might ask the same, for the same thing, and then we will have set a precedent. And then with that precedent, we could stand to lose a fairly significant percentage of the land that we set aside. For the more intensive uses that accomplish what we designated this area for, which was more intense. Uh, business, businesses that would be able to generate more revenue for the village, create a more walkable downtown. All the things that we did, and you know, you look at the, at the map in this dark pink and it's. These two little parcels here, that's a not insignificant chunk that we, I think. Potentially open us, ourselves up for, um, to become. To, to downzone, I think that. Our, our goals in creating this zone were, were good in the sense that that. We, we are trying to capitalize on the fact that we have the walkability of Ridge Road and the train and everything, and. I just want to caution us against. Having this possibly be the first vote towards. Possibly losing some of the ground that we gained by designating it.
Okay. Staff, do you have any comment on that?
Well, I, one of the things that we were discussing, um. As staff is that this code, when we, and I, I think that member Brian alluded to it, when this was. When we approved this code, we did say that we were going to do some follow-up and examination of how, how certain things worked. And, um, in rea, in realizing this building, yes, I, 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 I agree that this is a. A good location for retail and restaurant. a good location for retail and restaurant, but it's not very practical to put a re- a restaurant or a retail space, which is the only two permitted uses for this building. Really can't accommodate that due to the current configuration of this building. I don't think that we wanna say because, that this building needs to be demolished and something new put up at this point. The other thing, so the thing we were looking at is maybe those boundaries need to be adjusted. Maybe the, um, at a future meeting when we're considering changes to the code, which we have have several changes that we're gonna make, adjust it to move it to the east, um, across Ridge Road, on Ridge Road, where there are buildings that are more, um, compatible with retail and restaurant uses, and maybe expand that B one core, because we don't wanna lose that. We do want that liability upstairs. So that's something that we're, we've been talking about, maybe bring to the commission and the board in the future.
But it's the flexibility that's important. I mean, the, we, we, we made these zoning changes with the purpose of saying, this is the way we operate. But we never said that we weren't, we, there weren't exceptions because of, obviously, the code permits it. Uh, and.
And maybe we don't want to, maybe.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. Yeah.
These boundaries weren't appropriate boundaries for this, but it's a lot, it's a bigger question.
Right. Which is something that came up, you know, during the time we had to consult it, right? Okay, so, and, and I said, I remember well, we're gonna be coming back to this often, because there's no way that you can plan for all of that and set up a system that's infallible, that allows, that where the zones are gonna stay, the zoning is gonna stay the way it should be. So, my, my response to what you said would be flexibility. We consider each building or each property on its own merits. And, and it.
Yeah, and the possibility of a restaurant, for instance, going into this building. It, it just would never happen.
Right.
First of all, because it would have to be sprinkled, and then you'd have to put in grease trap, and then you've got all your ventilation and stuff, and you're going up through two floors of residential. So something like that would never go in there.
You just don't have the open floor space either. Your structure just doesn't allow the floor space, so you'd have to do major engineering overhauls to the building, which would be an undue hardship to the owner.
Yeah.
I understand the plight of the fact that it, it is, it is difficult to achieve any of those uses of this current building, but I also, I'm thinking about the land. I worry about the geography and the location and potentially losing that opportunity because we're thinking about the, the existing building there. When we, we, I think we should be also thinking, you know, ten, twenty years into the future and what, what that might look like, you know? Will the building even still be there? I think, I just, that's kind of where I'm coming from, is I'm not just thinking about the existing building, I'm thinking about the land and the geography.
I understand.
Uh, but isn't that, uh, isn't that what you're, you, you're, you're saying, Angela, that you're thinking, I mean, this isn't before us tonight, but we're talking about reconfiguring that district, right? And why are we thinking about reconfiguring that district? Because it makes more practical the need, right? Right. Not the building, but its development in the area, so.
The area, so, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So that, that would be my response, but I understand what you're saying.
But no, I mean, I, hearing that, I, that is intriguing about potentially shifting the boundaries and that, I think.
We don't wanna lose that.
Would address my concern. I was just looking, because I was doing like a measurement on Google Maps, and I was like, gosh, that's like twenty-five percent of V one, and that would be really a shame to lose, but, yeah.
Yes.
Uh, one thing I didn't bring up. So for a salon, uh, whatever they do, they sell a product. It's not only service. They, they, they have retail front, they sell products, they service. And the people come to, like, Washington here, they sell a product, they can try first, then bring home. It's not only service, it's retail and service together.
Right, but the retail would be a very small portion of
Yeah.
of what their entire business is.
Yes. So.
And, yeah.
Let me ask the obvious question. Should we expand the rezoning to the entire block to include the other two buildings that I mentioned? If that is what you're discussing and planning, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we're looking twenty years out, and the last, we redid a zoning from two thousand. So, looking forward, should we discuss in a full discussion what we're doing?
Not, not this, you can't do, yeah. Not this agenda. Absolutely, we can't do it tonight, but it's something that we.
Yeah, I, I prefaced the whole thing by my comment. This is a very complicated case.
Right, yeah.
And we need to have a full discussion about it to make sense of it. Otherwise, this is a variation to me of spot zoning. You're taking one building, it's not forward planning. Why are we doing this? And as you discussed, and, and you discussed, all of us, maybe we should do the entire block. Maybe that is more comprehensive, more forward-thinking. All I'm asking is, let's have a full discussion.
Mr.
We can't, you can't, yeah.
Right.
No, I think we should, but we can't do it, obviously, no.
Well, you look back twenty years ago, enclosed malls were the big thing. Try and find one now.
Things change, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chris, your questions?
Yeah.
So, member O'Brien, to your point about spot zoning, I understand that, but, um, I think this was a kind of a landmine laying in wait for us, because when we applied the, the new B one zoning district, this building didn't change because of that. It's always been this way. So it was never gonna fit into B one, uh, uses, um, neatly and cleanly. So this, whether, whether this young lady was the owner or anybody else was the owner, uh, unless somebody was coming in and wanting to gut it or demolish it, how is it ever gonna meet the B ones? So I think it, I, I, I understand your point about spot, uh, zoning. I don't think we quite meet that. I think it was laying in wait, just waiting to be discovered.
Variation.
Yeah.
Right.
Let me ask you a question. What do you feel is the benefit of the rezoning at this point in time?
At this point in time? Um, it's, well, you just, you, all you have to do is look at the list, is open it up to greater opportunity of what might go in there and make it more useful and avoid, uh, vacancies.
But as I mentioned, the one, one problem associated with that is more than half of those special uses require more parking, which is always a problem. It, it exacerbates.
Well, that's true, but wouldn't we be skipping ahead of ourselves? Because wouldn't that be a subject matter that we would take on in the special use discussions for each one of those cases?
Yes.
So I don't know how you can, we, we don't know yet. We're, we're blind to that when we're looking at the amendment. We don't know what, what it is that's gonna try to go in there. So we don't know what the parking demand is. And I think you're right. I think we're gonna run into the parking issues, so it's on what, we're, we're, we're helping run into parking issues. But also, to this Jones' point is, this is one of the rarities, where he's got fifty, forty-eight, whatever it is, lot of spots
Forty-eight.
to the building, which is, you know, that's huge in, in, in the downtown Homewood area.
Yes, it is.
Um, but I, I don't think, I don't, that, that's a subject matter more for what's gonna go in there, special uses, limited use cases, not, not the amendment. In, in my opinion of it.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's the thing we wanna emphasize. This is about the amendment, um, not the future. It's about the amend, I, I mean, it is about the future in the sense that we're thinking about it, but in short, it's about the amendment that's on the agenda.
Whatever, whatever our opinions are of what might go in there, we have to remain blind to that at this moment, as we, as we consider this vote. If this vote goes positive and we, we rezone it B two, then they're gonna bring special use cases or limited use cases up before us. Then those blinders come off, and then we consider each individual one. Does that fit? Does that fit? Is that, is that use? Are we oversaturating? Are we losing diversity of, of business types, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? But that doesn't apply here. It's, it's, what's our use, usability and functionality of the building in the current zoning? And in, in the B one, they're never gonna, they say, I hate to be crude, but, you know, trying to fit ten pounds in a five-pound bag, you know?
And that includes the construction of the building, the, the spaces, the size of the spaces.
That's what B one is asking us to do, jam that ten pounds into the five-pound bag, but, uh, with B two, kind of, we get a bigger bag, or, well, or less, whatever, you figure it out.
Well, at least in B two, it gives you, you can pick and choose what's gonna fit in that particular size space.
But at least we know we're, 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 we're only on that issue now. We're not on any other issue, okay? So.
See, I have a follow-up for staff. My question, did you look that up? The co- co.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
It is in the code.
It is in the code.
The twenty-five hundred, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
The greater than twenty-five hundred?
There's three, there's three categories under, um, twenty-five hundred, over twenty-five hundred, and above ground floor.
What page is it on?
I have a digital version in front of me. I don't know what page it is on.
Okay.
It's in the eastern, um.
That's my second air dish here.
They're slipping.
If we're, if we're at a point for opening it up to the audience, you at least have one.
Did you have another question, member Castaneda?
Uh, well, the, please, this channel link.
Yes, sir. Uh, so the current parking situation, we have sixteen residential tenants and forty-eight parking spots, so seventy percent of the parking spots are, most of the time are vacant currently. And, um, and right now the zoning change, um, the benefit of the zoning change is right now we have three vacant units. We can have that bring it out, uh, all, all three units bring it out within the next two, three months if we get that zoning change. It mostly is a market-driven, um, act. It's not, we personally wants to do it. It's a lot of the tenants that apply for the, for the spaces are falls into the B two category.
The residential units, are they a mixture of one and two bedroom?
Yes.
Are there any three-bedroom?
No.
No, just one and two?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any comments they would like to make on the rezoning? Anybody in the audience?
Here's one.
Really, really, uh.
Will we have your name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Yu, Jen. Eleven twenty-seven twenty South Highland Avenue, Melbourne. I'm just, as like a regular audience tonight, I have a very simple question for the commissioners, and what is the benefit that to keep the B one?
What is the what?
What is the benefits to keep this location property, the kids of B one, knowing?
Well, that's kind of what we're trying to discuss. What's the benefit of keeping a B one as opposed to rezoning it to B two? Like member Bransky mentioned, you're pretty limited on B one. What you could put in?
Yeah, well.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if it's a general question about what B one and B two are, it's, it's spelled out in the code, and, and so it's B one. It's a long lit la- laundry list of, of wishes and, uh, um, hopes for what could be part of the business district that includes everything from having retail businesses that provide revenue, tax revenue, re- revenue, so on and so on. You can, you can see it in the code. But if, if it's specific to what he said, yeah, we, that's what we've been discussing.
Assures revenue generating uses, retail and restaurants generate revenue to the village. Those uses are still permitted uses in the B two district, but when you have B one, they're the only permitted uses. So it forces that to be, and, but you're not getting that revenue if it's vacant. So that's the, that's the balance of it.
Right, right. There's.
And we, we are looking for tax revenue. And it's, it's the way the village operates. Without our tax sellers, you know.
These are high-value uses that generally also require a, a lot of front, you know, frontage on busy streets or kind of on a main street, something like that. And those spaces being reserved for those uses is an intentional act to, um, make sure that those spaces which need that area are also given that, that level of deference.
Yes.
Question, I have a question for staff. Um, ballpark timeline, how long do you think it would take for us to explore and potentially adopt new boundaries for B one?
We have been, we talked about that too. We can start working on that, um, you know, within, within this year. Every year, we, we are already trying, starting to do some research on the reasons that we would want to do that.
That's it.
We can bring it here in December, and December.
Okay, yeah. I mean, that would, it'll, it'll raise my concerns about percentage of square footage left for this. And if there was a, like, as close to a one-to-one replacement that we could do by shifting to the other side of Dixie and the other parts of Ridge, it makes sense that those should be B one. Um, they should have been all along. So, but yeah, that would, that, that'll raise my concerns that I expressed here.
Okay.
Yeah, we can, we can move that to here as soon as.
Yes, yep, absolutely. We can move it to the front of the line.
Any other comments from the board?
Sure.
No. Nobody in the audience has any questions pertaining to rezoning? Okay. So it's back to us, or we ready to make any kind of decision?
Want a motion?
Okay. No.
Make that motion. Right, sir. Chairman, um, I'll make the motion for, um, direct mental approval of case twenty-five dash thirty-four, map amendment for the property at one eighty-one oh six to one eighty-one twenty-four Martin Avenue from the B one downtown core zoning district to the B two downtown transition zoning district, and incorporate the findings backed into the record, which there are currently seven listed.
Do we have a second for that?
A second.
Member Bransky is second by member Castaneda. Roll call.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Suzega?
Yes.
Good luck to you. Thank you. That's the base of making the morning happy, yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I just need to final board approval at the next board meeting.
Very appreciate it. You're more, you let's come to your town, okay? Bring it, if together, bring my, um, sweet home, but who would be a really sweet home?
My computer's gone dead, my battery's happened to be dead. Uh, Angela, do, do we have another, my computer, yeah, do we have another, uh, set of them? Agenda? Another copy?
Agenda?
Yeah. If, no, I can, I can just share one. No, I'm, no, no, I'll share those.
Okay, our next case is case number twenty-five thirty-five, a special use permit for a salon spa at one eighty-one twenty-four Martin.
Here.
The applicant's name is Tatiana Perkins, requesting a special use. This also is published in the September twenty-fourth edition of the South Town. And did we get any comments on this?
Uh, we did not receive any public comments on this prior to the hearing.
Okay. Want to come up to the podium, please? Do you state your name and address for the record?
Tatiana Perkins, address one eighty-one twenty-four F Martin Avenue.
Okay, you wanna raise your right hand, swear the testimony you're gonna give is gonna be the truth. The whole truth is nothing but the truth self-he got.
Yes.
So you are requesting permission to open a salon spa at one eighty-one twenty-four Martin?
Yes.
In that particular building. Is that the head unit or the center unit?
It's the front unit.
It's the what?
It's the front. The, it's the rear and then.
It's the far end, yeah, it's it's the far corner, right.
Oh, okay. Where the dental office used to be, okay.
But by the way, when you say front and rear, which is the rear?
That's which side of the.
Okay, so you've requested a special use to operate a salon at one eighty-one twenty-four Martin. A salon suites concept. With suites for independent. Rental, correct?
Yeah.
And in addition, the business will provide retail sales for skin and makeup products. As well as production space for podcasts and photography.
Yes.
Is this the space that currently has a sign hanging on the building above it?
No.
You're at the end unit?
Yes.
Okay. So you were the unit that I visited this afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, my first question is. You're here tonight to request permission. To open a salon and operate a salon there. I was there this evening about. By thirty, you got three customers in the. That you were taking care of.
No, those wasn't three customers, the one that was in my chair was my niece and then my godbaby that greeted you at the door and said hello. Her mom was sitting in the chair and then my niece's mom was sitting in the chair, so it was my mom.
Okay, but you were taking care of a customer?
Yes, I was taking care of my niece, yeah.
But you're here tonight to get permission to do so.
Yeah.
So what am I missing? How are you operating before you get permission? That you're here tonight to request?
Feel like that wasn't a paid job that I was doing, my my things are there. Yeah, been there before, um this came about, so. I had to come here tonight, I work in Harvey right now, currently, because I wasn't able to. Operate my salon after this mishap. So since I was gonna be here tonight, I just decided to re-curl her hair from home come. At the spa.
Okay. Well, let me back up a minute, let me ask you this, you need four positive votes. There's five of us here.
Yeah.
Do you wanna continue your case tonight? Do you want us to hear your case tonight?
Yeah.
Would you like to continue that?
I would like you all to hear my case tonight.
Hear it tonight, okay. Alright, so give us the background information of what you wanna do then.
I have a written. Um hello everyone, and thank you for taking the time to hear about my vision for TP Lux.
And you're gonna have to talk a little bit louder so we can hear you and they can.
Hello everyone, and thank you for taking the time to hear about my vision for TP Lux Studios. My goal with TP Lux Studios is to create more than just a salon. I want to build a modern welcoming space that feels like home for stylists, estheticians and clients. Our salon will feature two private suites for independent stylists, estheticians or whatever their service provided. Um for open salon stations, we're three now. And a clean minimalist design featuring a distinctive historical wall for content. That encourages comfort, creativity and confidence. Our retail will consist of TP Lux hot tools such as flat iron and hot condoms. Heat protecting, silken and mist, hair extensions, that's number one. Our waist train is called the waist bully that I've been working on since two thousand twenty. An exclusive cosmetic and skincare product from my uncle Beauty Bar Rudy. Based in New York City who's seeking a Chicago man location. Though what truly sets TP Lux Studios apart is our focus on education and empowerment. We'll host hands-on classes and workshops for local stylists, helping them grow their skills. Build their clientele and step into business ownership with confidence. I believe that when we invest in education, we strengthen not only individuals, but our entire community. Our salon will also be a place that gives back to the neighborhood with small business collaborations. And community events that celebrate beauty, wellness and entrepreneurship. Also, my team and I would like to participate in community events as well as community outreach. We want to be a positive presence on Martin Avenue, a space that uplifts, connects and inspires. Ultimately, TP Lux Studios isn't just about here, it's about opportunity, growth and community. We're here to create a ripple effect, helping stylists thrive independently while giving our neighborhood. A place to feel seen, supported and beautiful, thank you.
Member Bransky, would you like to start this time?
Sure. Thank you for your opening remarks, well done, good volume.
Thank you.
I got a question for staff right out of the gate, this is the question that I held from the last case. And I thought would be more appropriate for this case, typically when we're looking at. Uh cases for salons and spas, staff usually provides us with what the current count is. On uh similar type businesses. Do we, do we have any kind of an update, um especially I think it's it's pertinent because. Um with the um. With the uptick in zoning amendment cases that we've seen recently. It's a concern to see what, what do we have, where where are we um? Losing this type of business and where are we gaining that, what's our, what's our revised total count, I think is the big question.
I did send out a email with that information and um. A little while ago, I think it was before the previous meeting. Um I was trying to find it right now.
I have it right? October eight.
October eight. So we have.
So thirteen active known salons, adding the two salons would bring the number up to fifteen in B one. And B two.
And B one and B two in downtown, just downtown, or is that all?
But in B, in B one, there are only currently, how many are there in B one now?
B one.
Two?
Two.
And we're down to.
Yeah.
In B one, we're we're.
Yeah.
We have a reduction to as well.
Right.
To get to that too, so we had four, now we're two.
Yeah, two, two salons in the B one district have closed since our new code and they cannot be opened.
So we'll never have, never is never, we'll never have, yeah, anymore.
So what's our total down to now then?
Thirteen.
Thirteen?
Right now it's thirteen from sixteen.
Okay.
And that's in B one and B two combined. That's both B one and B two, it's thirteen total.
Yes.
Adding these cases tonight would bring it back up to fifteen.
Bring to fifteen.
Question for the applicant, I'm looking at your floor plan, thank you for the information. Can you? Just for some of us that might not be as familiar with your industry, can you explain to us? The the difference um between you've got, well on the drawing, you you have four booths. Laid out or tagged, but I heard you say now it's just three.
Now it's three because as I walk in, I see that I don't want everyone crowded.
One's gonna be in the way.
Yeah, one is gonna be in the way.
And if you're sitting in that booth in the middle of winter and that door opens.
Yeah.
Not fun, okay, so three booths, two suites, what? What um? What's the logic behind behind that, what what makes this the suite different than the?
Sweets are different.
What's it do for you?
I'm sorry, the suites are different because one is private, you don't have to come out to. Wash hair or do anything, everything is equipped in your suite and it's more bigger and it's more money. So.
So whoever's gonna rent that suite.
Yeah.
Is gonna have, obviously pay more than just the roof.
Yeah, they'll be paying, and then it's your own personal space rather than being outside with the rest of the stylist or the tenant.
And I heard you say that the other so- salon type services provided. And I take it that those will happen in the suites, whereas the booths will just be dedicated to hair.
Yes.
Basically, okay. So the the, let me tell you the reason I'm asking the question. And the reason I'm asking the question is because right now in this current market that we're in. We see a whole lot of activity in the salon suite. Concept and um typically um there's people trying to jam. A dozen or more of these suites into a place, they want twenty-four seven access. They wanna be able to provide uh a number of services but can't seem to. To say what exactly they will be and that's part of the problem of a special use, you have to define. How you are going to use the space and people come in here and they say, well, we wanna be able to do this or this or this or this, you gotta pick. Um so what I'm trying to point out here is your your um plan here. Compared to what we typically see under the guise of salon suites, it's very small. Obviously, because your space is limited, limits you to what you can do. Um so I guess I'm just trying to point out that um you're you're limiting yourself to the two suites. Where you have more than one um. Service available and then the three stations for for air. And in this size space, if you were gonna go with a traditional shop where you didn't have the suites and you just went with chairs. And guessing you probably wouldn't gain a whole lot more, maybe you would just have. You know, another two or three. Chairs and that's about it, be all you have room for, okay. I'm just trying to get a feel in my head uh and maybe to the for the benefit of others that. Um by categorizing this as salon suite, it's not the. The big mess that we're typically seeing come through here, that's all. Can you please restate what your intended services are? That you're planning on doing?
Okay.
And 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 let me, we just say, I would just let me, what what's realistic? I mean, I'm sure you got in your future wish list.
Realistic.
What's realistic of what you really wanna be doing in here?
Realistic is hair, honestly, hairstylist, that's. I want an esthetician, I want somebody who service different things. But realistically, hair, hairstylist.
So if you had an esthetician or 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 somebody like that. They would be in a suite space, but they wouldn't be renting that suite space like all day long, unless they had appointments. They would be coming in. The the suite's gonna serve more than one type of client and it's gonna be shared between. You- your renters, so to speak, that's not really renting, but your 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 technicians that are gonna pay you for the space. They're gonna be coming and going out of these suites, right, oh?
It would be theirs, it would be, they're they'll, they're gonna lease the suite, so it wouldn't be no one else coming in.
Okay, so we'll be dedicated to that person on the days that they're gonna pay you for.
Yes.
Like maybe Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then you've got somebody else maybe doing it Tuesday, Thursday. No, it'll be, it'll just be one person?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Good answer, thank you, that's all I have, I think.
Just clarification, you said four sta- three stations or four stations, right?
Dedicated to three now.
Okay, oh changed, okay.
One by the front doors out.
Yeah, that's, I'm I'm sorry, I I literally was just looking and just changed my mind, I I really think it's.
I've got a question for you, um. So you're gonna be down to booth one, two and four. You're gonna get rid of booth three.
Yeah, I'm getting rid of the booth that's on the opposite side. So there wouldn't be any booths on the opposite side of the.
Okay. Will there be partitions between these booths or is it just an open area?
It would be, I want um like a home vibe, so like. A couch and a TV, a fireplace, like things in that nature, that's the reason why I took out the other booth, I didn't want it to be crowded. I just, I wanted to be spacious still because it is a small space, but I still want it to be spacious, able to walk and. You know, I don't wanna fire hazards.
Okay. Okay. Member Brown, or Brian?
Good evening. Have a couple of questions. Uh just to clarify, you would be eliminating a booth to have three. The booth you'd be eliminating is on the south wall behind the door.
Yes.
Okay, so there's two booths on your drawing, so you would only have.
Yeah, those are, those are, there's no more.
The booths are like barber chairs, there's no partitions.
Right.
Okay. Uh I wonder if you could clarify. Uh materials indicate the applicant anticipates a total of five to six employees, including those renting. The suites.
Yeah.
If you take those two off, the five or six employees become three or four, is that correct?
I'm sorry, it's three booths in the front now, I mean, two in the suite, so it's five. Instead of six, it's just five.
Okay, those are not employees, those are people contractually.
Independent contractor.
Pardon me?
Independent contractor.
Independent contractors, okay, will you have any employees?
One assistant and someone who um from our retail, so in the in the future, yes.
One, one employee?
Yes.
Okay. Are you currently operating the salon?
In this moment, you know, but I I was in there today.
You responded to uh Chairman Suziga that. The people he saw today were. Related to you?
Yes.
Even though you were performing services?
Everyone was related.
Okay. The. Testimony that's given at the our meetings is taken under oath. Is there, um I'd like to. Give you the opportunity to revise anything that you would. Want to uh. Rephrase.
May I say something?
Certainly.
Alright, so currently I work at the Butterfly Effect in Harvey, Illinois. But like when I, when I go to the salon, like put up my stations or anything, I probably like do like one or two. But I'm not operating the salon because I don't have tennis, I don't have anything, it was literally just me, I know that I'm. Not able to do a full service or do, be there all week or be there all day, I know I can't do that. But before this came about, I was aware that I was able to do a salon, so I started buying things, I started getting spacious, I started going over there. Until this bump in the road came. So, yes, so currently I have to go back to where I was, which is the Butterfly Effect in Harvey, Illinois.
And you work where?
The butter.
It's called, it's a salon called the Butterfly Effect, Harvey, Illinois.
And Harvey. So you're there during the day?
Yes.
Okay, every day, Monday through Friday? Okay. Then the question, the obvious question I would ask of you is, who would be there at two thirty this past Tuesday cutting hair? With a customer in the chair? Pardon me?
I sound confused when you said cutting hair.
I had to go to Van Sittmas Jewelers in downtown. And I wanted to check out some information of the materials that we received for tonight and I went down Martin. And when I went down Martin, there was a customer being taken care of. Uh at two thirty on Tuesday afternoon. Uh, at two thirty on Tuesday afternoon. And I couldn't believe it, and I took a picture. And there's the picture. In fact, I took two pictures.
Okay, right.
Okay. So, my question again is, who is operating your salon?
Me, I'm, I'm the only one that comes in or when I'm, when I'm in the neighborhood, things like that, like I just said before. I have been over there, I have taken one or two people. I'm not operating for a salon because nobody has signed the contract. Nobody else came in and rented a booth for me, so no, I am not operating for a salon. Those are the services that I provide, but what I currently pay booth rent. Is at the Butterfly Effect.
So you were cutting hair at two thirty in the afternoon?
I'm not understanding at the beginning what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm saying is that I have taken one or two people, I have done those things, yes, I have. But where I am currently operating, where I take my ten clients and my fifteen clients is. In Harvey, if I am over here in the neighborhood putting up a station or anything, and I just tell my client, well, just come over here. I'll just do you, I would just take you here while I'm in the middle of doing something, I'm not there all day. That I, unless I have something to do in the salon, unless I am waiting on a package or something like that, I can't stop my business. I have to do what I have to do.
But you're here tonight to get permission to operate the salon.
I am.
But you're already operating a salon.
We have two different definitions of operating some. Only because, uh, like I said, nobody is paying me booth rent, nobody is working in there at all, I am the owner of the spot currently.
For, for verification, you know, you're here tonight to get zoning approval, you don't have permission to operate a business. And maybe you're more aware of this, that you don't have permission to operate at all on that space, we haven't approved it for occupancy, we haven't approved it. For any kind of business operation at all. I know you're leasing it, and I know that, you know, it feels like your space, but the, the village hasn't given you permission.
This is the second picture of the client smiling while you're cutting her hair on Tuesday at two thirty.
When you say operating a salon, I just told you, we have to have two different definitions.
Let me ask you a question, do you understand what this is? This is a planning and zoning commission, it's a quasi-legal body. Okay, uh, testimony is taken under oath.
Exactly.
Okay, and cases become before us. And uh, sometimes our decisions are questioned by the courts, and they go into the courts. The, the zoning codes are laws, they're ordinances, ordinances are laws. And uh, by operating.
That's what this book is, that's our zoning ordinance, it's got all the laws, all the things you can and cannot do.
I, I think, you know. I think we understand, I think, you understand that you did not have permission to be in that. Other than that, and that's what we're trying to say.
Yeah, like just because there wasn't a cashier and a receptionist, you know, it still technically falls under that definition, so it's kind of like a letter versus the spirit.
You, you thought it was your rental space and.
Do you know the reason for a license? For the public health and safety?
You're aware of she, she doesn't require a business license?
The reason for a license is for the protection of the public, safety, health, et cetera.
That's why we, so we technically don't issue business licenses, a business occupancy permit, which says that you can. Can occupy the unit and it's safe for.
Um, but I'm not open to the public, I think that's where I got this.
Okay. Guy's got his hand up.
And while we're not done with the board yet. Number Johnson, you have anything?
No, I think we cleared that up, uh, but. I guess the only question I have, everything else has been answered, is the hours of operation. You've said, I, the material said seven to nine, or, I'm sorry, nine to se- nine to seven, was it?
The service provided, we have no, yeah, that's probably my run a little over, but seven is.
And for, for, for me, that's gonna be important, because if, you know, if the, with the approval, it's, you know. I mean, nobody, you know, sometimes you make, you have to make adjustments. It, it could change day of the week, you could say Monday, Tuesday, but now I've decided it. Not gonna be Monday, Tuesday, it's gonna be Thursday, Friday, so I understand that. What I am concerned about generally though is noise. Uh, aft- at night, uh, and operating this kind of business. After what we can generally consider normal business hours. Which you probably know better what normal business hours for your industry is anyway, than I do, but. I look at normal business hours as, you know, nine to five kinda, kinda stuff, and, and, and I know that that's can't be true in your business. But I also know that uh, ten o'clock at night is pretty late to be operating a business of this nature. Uh, and can you speak to that, what, what you're, I know you said your last appointment would be seven o'clock, is that what you're? You're, you're saying? So if it. Right, so at eight o'clock, you wouldn't be accepting a client. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that that's uh, I don't know if that's in the findings in the material, because I don't have mine up in front of me.
On, on page forty-one where the recommended.
It, it is listed.
Is, it is nine AM to ten PM.
Okay, so, so I would have a problem with the ten, yeah, the nine AM to ten PM. But uh, you've, you've told me what your, what your plans are, so I, I would look to. I would be looking to make the change to um, nine AM to something else. And then, I don't know whether we can restrict that or not, Angela. Okay.
We can do that.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's, that's the only question I have.
So did you wanna change the hours?
Yeah, I, 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 I think uh, the op- time of operation would be nine AM to seven PM. You know, but having said that, you said that there wouldn't be any more customers after that. So customers, right. Exactly, exactly, right, right, so the hours, right, exactly, so, yeah, so that would be my concern. So, yeah, I would, I would, you know, if we accept the recommendation, I would uh, that's my personal concern.
And is that Monday through Sunday, or?
Yes, it's seven days.
Seven days only.
That's all I had, thank you.
My questions have been answered, thank you.
I have one question, if your last scheduled deployment would be at seven o'clock, dependent upon the service. It could be a two or a three hour. Appointment, could it not? So it would, it could go to nine or ten o'clock at night with a seven o'clock appointment. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask the follow-up? Question along those lines? So, we have other salon type businesses in this building already. And we've got this as special use, so if we're gonna sit here and set operating times for one. Um, business in the building, I would think it would be um, only fair to take into consideration what the other. Um, businesses of this type are, are doing for theirs, I wouldn't wanna see undue hardship caused for one tenant. Um, by not doing our research on what the other tenants are doing for like businesses. I think that's a fair question.
May, may we know that?
I don't think we know the business hours of all the other tenants.
No, we, we don't know the hours of every single tenant in the building. I do want to briefly make a comment about the conditioned language, the nine AM to ten PM. So kind of on your point that you're making right now. Um, that's the less restrictive hours of the two salons that you see here. And those were applied to both, just because we didn't want to create again an undue burden on one business or the other. Um, just kind of set that, they're similar to hours we proposed for past salon uses in the area, but. Again, that's just some background on why those hours are selected there as well. Um, kinda getting, kinda touches on your point that you were, you were asking about.
So. The suggestion of going to seven PM, I'm just thinking.
Which you have a, which you can recommend for a, a.
We've got three or four other similar businesses already existing in the building, and if they got eight, nine o'clock, and we're. Limiting these businesses to seven, we're creating an undue hardship.
Oh, bro, okay.
What we recommended for.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, no, I, 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 I take that, uh, that's, I, I mean, I. Don't know how to respond to, to that, other than say, those are pretty late hours for a hair salon business and to be operating. Ten o'clock at night, so, uh, so, and anybody else who's already in there. I mean, their grandfather in, so you can't, it's not, I, I guess you could go back and say. Sorry, your new hours are gonna be uh, not the ten o'clock that you thought you had, you're gonna have to do what uh. What you're having to do, uh, I wouldn't necessarily want that either, so. Uh, so that's news to me, uh, I think it's a little late, but it is what it is, but, yeah, I definitely don't wanna disadvantage you.
I'm not necessarily fair with that ten PM either, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking at it from the standpoint of. We don't have somebody coming in here wanting to do that whole twenty-four hour thing like we've had in the past, so.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that, that, that's fine. We can, we can, we can leave it as, as it is, if that's the concern.
We'll, we'll leave it at ten PM.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm not gonna, if that's, if, if that is the case, then, yeah, yeah, okay.
I was gonna say, should I, that we're all here until nine?
Oh, yeah, we've, we've got, we've got, uh, we've got fifteen minutes, Mr. Chair. I have no, uh, I don't have any other questions.
Remember Castaneda, you didn't have any questions?
No, uh, the only thing I, I noted when I was reviewing the materials, just to, to, just of note, there's. Uh, approving both of these proposed salons would make the tenancy of the building over half salons. It's just reckon- recognize that fact, but other than that, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay, I've got a couple for you. You're gonna have one employee, you said.
So far, yes.
Okay.
The future, I'm not sure, but right now, yes, that's.
What about the, the suites that you lease out? Will they have any employees also?
Sure.
And they'll be subjected to the same hours?
Yes.
Okay. It also says you plan on being there regularly.
Yes.
So you're gonna have. You yourself will have one employee.
Yes.
To start.
Yes.
Which may increase.
Maybe two, but if the space is not there, it's really for me to have.
And the people that are renting the, or the suites. You don't know how many people they would have.
It, it should only be one.
One?
Yes.
Okay, and they would be subjected to the same hours. Of operation. Seven AM to ten PM, Monday through Sunday.
Nine, nine AM to ten PM. Nine, you said seven AM.
Oh, nine AM to se- to ten PM, right.
I also don't know my independent contractor, I would operation, but I would enforce that to them before they sign anything.
Um, I think that was my only other question. You have anything else, anybody here?
I have a question.
Yes.
No, Steph, on the findings of fact, um, finding number three. Technically, since we, these were positioned to have the zoning first. And the two cases, I, uh, finding the fact number three should be B two. And four and five should be eliminated, technically, we've already approved it.
Well, it says it's currently located in a B one.
It's, it's currently located in a B two now, because we just approved it. The prior case.
Right.
Well, numbers three through six go together, um, that it's not in the currently zoned properly, it needs to be rezoned. That rezoning has not been completed until the village board signs approval, so technically it is not yet in that correct zoning district. So three to six would still apply.
So what happens if the village board doesn't approve it? The amendment, the zoning amendment?
The village board has to review the amendment first, so that.
Right. Special use has to go to them as well.
They'll be ordered in the same way.
They'll be ordered in the same way, so if they don't vote for the amendment, then.
Correct.
They're not gonna reach that point in their cases to give the village board.
Well, I mean, that's a conclusion. I mean, that's, that's ninety percent of the decisions we have to make anyways, so they have to be finally approved, right? So, I shouldn't say ninety, I don't know what percentage, but it's a pretty, yeah.
All right, we're gonna open it up to the audience, uh, if you have any questions or comments you would like to make. Yes, sir, we already have your name and you've already been sworn in. Mr. Kane, you had your hand up, state your name and address, please.
Uh, Barry Kane, um, I live at two, two zero three three Evans Road, uh, Floss.
Okay, you swear the testimony, you're gonna give us be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so. Okay.
Uh, this is more uh, a comment in regards to the independent contractor and the employee. Uh, contract, it's not really a contract, but it's an employee. Um, I own John and Kane's salon spa, two hundred and fifty feet from your location. And this is more for your protection and anybody else who else is renting. Um, the legal definition of a ten ninety-nine is you can't tell them anything, you can't tell them the hours they work. They have to have a key to the place, they can come and go as they want to. I have paperwork that I can supply the um, the board with. That stipulates for one of the industry magazines, the difference between a W, excuse me, W two employee. And what a ten ninety-nine is, and my salon is all, is all employees, so I know the difference. Um, but it was just more for your protection and. And we wish you best, love.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Anybody else back there? Okay, yes, sir. Nobody else back there, okay, yes, sir.
He's thinking about, he's been a contractor, me being a realtor, um we have forty-eight. Yes, he 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 uh we do a fact, as far as I'm interested in contractors, but as a company, we figure our own rules. Um they have their own battle, they have their battle, where they. So it started forcing, with the commissioner saying, you have to approach it, you'll you'll have your own battle, they have their reason for this favor.
Yeah, we're 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 not here to accept legal advice, the definition of employee. An independent contractor, even in the state of Illinois, is confusing, so we'll, let's leave the legal. Definition, but I appreciate your comments, and maybe that's something that, you know, the the uh applicant would wanna hear, but, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Robert Rossi, I own Samuel's Hair Salon at Lloyd eighty-one.
Swear this testimony you're gonna give is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, self forget.
You only can say, I have two concerns, one, uh I don't know if the village checks licenses of hairstylists. Barbers and uh petitions, and if uh the city of Homewood checks to see if they have. Sheriff's policies. That's one question, the other thing is. We have three salons right now in that building, and adding two more salons in that little area.
Anybody else? Any comments from the board?
Uh Mister Chairman.
Something this?
I introduced myself to many, I'm trying to introduce myself to you, but you weren't open. And I've met with strictly hair, we have conversations, my grandmother actually goes to him and get her hair done, me and her. Jaya, I've been doing her hair since she was in high school, so we all know each other, we all knew. What was coming about, because when I did come over there, I did get nervous, seeing different someone. But I took it upon myself to introduce myself to each and every one of them. And letting them know who I am, and letting them know that I'm not in competition with anyone. My clients and my stylists will have their own clientele, I have a so big social media follow. My clients mainly come from social media, or aware of them now, so I don't, we don't take walking.
That's not.
Right, so we won't, we wouldn't be stepping on any toes of yours or anything. I also wanna collab with the other stylists that's in the building, actually.
Good, if you have something else?
Yeah, I was just gonna piggyback on that comment about um. Saturation of this type of business in a small area. Um in um previous case, we heard testimony, and I don't mean to drag that testimony into this case, and I certainly don't, I'm not asking. Uh in anybody from that case to speak to this, and to make the the opinion that. Um it was said in that case that we need to bring more tu- needed to bring in more types of business. Um was one of the reasons to support the amendment for rezoning. And um like I said, we had to have blinders, and we're making that choice as to what that might be, but now here we are. The blinders are off, and we look at the list that we had on page twelve, previous case, with what was allowed in the B two. And we haven't heard anything about any of those types of businesses being a possibility, so um I feel personally that we are oversaturating. Um the area, um hopefully in the long term, um the B one, the B one will um. Um gain more of what the B one is supposed to be, and the B two transition will be where most of these types of businesses are. Are are ending up, but um I think the landlord, it's on, it's it's, is, it's their. Choice of what they're trying to bring in. Just feels like, yeah, it's 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 getting to be an oversaturation, I think it's gonna do, I think that effort's gonna defeat itself in the long run, the market, the market will prove it out.
I concur with your comments, the commission for the last ten years has had that concern, as you know.
Right.
And uh we followed and counted the number uh downtown and and the villages as a whole. And uh there's always a concern about the oversaturation. So the comments in the materials, that two closed, and therefore these two would take their. Uh this the place of those is not logical.
But that still gives us fifteen within a. Walking distance of each other.
Right, but I mean, uh two more could go, and we would be comfortable with that as well.
Right.
Mister Chair, I think we've discussed this matter, we've got one more somewhere. Like to make a motion to move on.
Want to make a motion to, on this case?
Yes.
Okay. Case twenty-five thirty-five.
Yeah, I'm just.
What uh what was the page? Uh I'm getting there.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, all right, there we go.
There we go. Yeah, motion to recommend approval of case twenty-five thirty-five, a request for a special use permit. To allow the operation of a salon and spa establishment in the B two downtown transition zoning district at. One eight, one two four Martin Avenue, subject to the following conditions, um. Finding of facts, uh the the concurrent application for zoning map amendment to rezone. The property from the B one downtown core zoning district to the B two downtown transition zoning district shall be approved. Prior to final village board approval of this permit, and two hours of operation for appointment. Traffic shall be limited to nine A M to ten P M, and incorporate the findings of fact into the record.
Anyway, we have motion by member Johnson, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by member Bransky.
I have a question. The way the sentence reads, special use permit to allow the operation of a salon and spa establishment in the B. Two downtown transition zoning, that should be B one. If we approved the case prior, and I questioned the findings of fact, number three. There should be a consistency.
Well, we can't, it's not, it's not permitted as a special use of B one, so technically you cannot permit it, uh there.
Yeah.
Can't prove a special use of B one.
How can we state that in item number one?
Right.
Because item number one is saying that it has to have approval of the village board, and that's why items three through six in the uh findings are legit. Until the vill- until the village approves it, when it approves it, three through six and the findings go away.
Okay.
And the recommended statement.
Okay, right. Yeah, it's self correcting, but it's accurate, even so, it's it's still accurate, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Hey, so we have, like, member Johnson, they demotion, and member Bransky, second, roll call.
Member Bransky?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
No.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
No.
Chair Suzega?
No. And my reason for voting no, I think we have a. Abundance of salons in the area like we just talked about. And I think we have to take care of the ones that we already have here, and have been here for a number of years. That's why I would vote no against it. Thank you very much, now does she go before the village board?
She can, um we'll have to restart that process, because this is a a recommendation, uh the recommendations fail. You can still go to the village board, um we'll have to talk about that, on that, so you can, we need more votes in the board.
Hey, thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, board members, it's nine o'clock, do we wanna hear the next case, or do we wanna continue it?
I I think it's only fair that we, if they want to, if they wanna go tonight, I think they've been waiting since seven. Well, we had to ask the questions, do they wanna wait and see if they can get a full board at the next meeting?
We bring that.
Yeah, what? Yeah.
Well, that would be my next question when I ask them.
Okay, yeah.
So if they wanna go on tonight, they wanna continue and hear their case?
Yeah. Do you?
Number Castaneda? Is that okay?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah. Do you, do you understand the question?
With the, can the applicant come forward for the next case? That's okay, we were clear on that. Yeah.
All right, our next petitioner is. Jaya Pittman?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want us to continue with this case tonight, or do you want to continue with to the, our next meeting?
I would like to continue it to the next meeting.
Continue to the next meeting?
Yes, I'd like to fill the board.
Okay. All right, so we'll, I um. We know when that might be.
Yeah, that is, I believe, November thirteenth.
Okay. All right, so we'll make a motion to continue your case until November.
November thirteenth.
Thirteen.
Yep, correct.
Okay, all right. Have a motion to uh continue the case. Twenty-five thirty-six, special use at one eighty-one ten Martin Avenue, for your salon.
Make that motion to continue.
Well, second.
Member Bransky, second by member Castaneda. All in favor? All right, you gotta do roll call.
Uh member Bransky?
Yes.
Member O'Brien?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Castaneda?
Yes.
Chair Suzega?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So we will be back here on November thirteen.
And for sharing that with me.
Anything else for us tonight?
Happy tomorrow.
Thank you all, thank you ladies.
Gonna get a motion to adjourn.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Member Castaneda.
Who made the motion?
Favor, I, nine oh three.
That's what I was telling member O'Brien. He's, it was, he, it, in what, thirty years, he made two mistakes.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.